The base, base salary, the other one that has benefits included, right?
Some benefits, yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, Councilman Valenzuela?
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, it's not about bragging about finding the means to hire fifteen police officers, you know, I'm proud, we should all be proud of the cops grant last year for fifteen police officers and we're applying again this year and hopefully we'll get, you know, we'll get the highest grant that the DOJ offers, hopefully, by getting awarded again, and of course, to the budget process, we should always look for the means to hire more police officers, it's not about bragging about those things, it's about doing everything we possibly can, moving the ball in that direction, yes, we absolutely need a plan, I think none of us should be allowed to sit on this council, Councilman DeCecio, and actually act as if you're not on the council, I mean, how many times tonight do we actually have to hear, how many times tonight do we have to actually hear about what the mayor and council has been doing, what the mayor and council has been doing, you've been on the council probably four or five times as long as I have been on this council, join the team here, and-
Well, the team is wrong here.
This is your team, too.
And if you're gonna impose these cuts on these people, go ahead and do that, Councilman Valenzuela, but the reason is, there is a difference up here in opinions, and there's a clear difference that the direction that you and others-
You know, Councilman, it's about action, it's not about opinions, it's about action, and that's what the point is.
Where's the action, then?
Well, I agree, let's make a comment, Danny, since you're talking, I would agree it is about action, and it's time for this council to be proud of the men and women that are here today, not the fifteen we'll get tomorrow, okay, that's what this council needs to be focused on, is these men and women who are here today, and not cutting their pay and cutting their benefits.
Alright, thank you very much, other comments by members of this, Councilwoman Pastor, please?
I would like to go to slide four. That tiny little box, and it says eighty-seven thousand, I'm just, or I could round it up, but, that's the market, right? Am I reading this right, Will?
Corey, this is the, it was done in 2011, it's the total compensation study that the city paid the Siegel Company about half a million dollars to conduct.
Okay, so, thank you for that, but-
But yeah, but it's the total compensation-
Thank you for the commentary. So it says eighty-five thousand and then eighty-seven.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes.
On the city manager's side, it says eighty-one thousand, now, on this eighty-five, eighty-seven, is this the base pay, or, explain this to me, I guess?
This was the study, the city did the study, as some of you were in the council before they voted to do the study, it was a total compensation study of the entire city, and it looked at different job classes, but one thing that the council wanted to look at was every job class and sworn public safety, so it looks everybody on here, you see at the top, from the fire chief, police chief, all the way down to the police officer, and all the fire and police ranks, and so supposedly, it says at the top, a total compensation cost comparison, so you'll have to ask the city what that means, but to me, that means it looked at all compensation, and it found that we're at ninety-eight percent of the market at eighty-five, six-thirty, and that a hundred percent of the market would be eighty-seven-one, and it found that the average, even you divide all these together, was at a hundred-and-ten percent of the market.
Okay, got it. So, for the city, page five, it's completely different.
I'm gonna ask the city manager, he's had an opportunity before, but the question's coming up again, so, the information that the city presented at the hearing from the Siegel Study appears to be different than information provided, and then I want to give the city manager an opportunity to explain why they may appear differently, please.
My best understanding of the Siegel Study, this is things other than salary and wages, I think this includes cost of some benefits, perhaps healthcare, I don't know, I can't see it, I'm not familiar with that slide, the city's is dealing with specific, three specific things, salary, longevity, and continuing education pay.
Okay, 'cause this one says health cost, retirement benefit, and it says DB retirement benefit, DC retirement benefit, why wouldn't that be included in this slide five?
Slide five was trying to compare things that we could compare across cities more simply.
Okay.
We're trying to stay equivalent from city to city.
Alright, please.
I have another question, 'cause we're gonna, page, I think it's five, the next one, next slide.
That one, Laura?
Yeah. This is just base pay.
That's the maximum range of base pay for a Phoenix police officer compared to the maximum of base pay for other cities.
And then what's included on the slide five of the city is the base play, pay, plus longevity and CEP pay.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, that's correct.
Do we even have that comparison for, like, say Scottsdale salary, longevity and CEP pay?
Alright, that's the second line.
Okay.
I would just like to add, Councilwoman Pastor, in fact-finding under oath, Ms. McIntyre, who did the comparison, told the fact-finder, and you can, it's on tape, that she was directed only to ask if the city provided CEP, and not to ask if they provided education pay or any other thing, there's lots and lots, like, CEP contains thirty or forty components, there's training pay, education pay, seniority pay, all sorts of stuff involved in CEP, she was told that she was directed not to ask about any of the other pay, and just ask if they have CEP pay, so.
Alright, thank you very much, Councilwoman Pastor, other members of this council, Vice Mayor.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it, I'm voting no on this item, I think I said that before, several reasons, one of them relates to what Councilman DeCecio and Councilman Valenzuela's talk about the team, I vote no a lot, that's been highlighted at some council meetings, even in the mayor's state-of-the-city speech, to great humor, actually, people mentioned that, but part of the reason is, I think some of the things we do are wrong, many are right, I vote yes more often than I vote no, but quite a few are wrong, I think in this case, our policy here is wrong, we are treating every job the same, they have worked very hard, and I respect the work for Ed and his staff, but they've worked very hard to make sure the numbers, so everybody's getting cut equally, but that assumes every dollar we spend as a city is equal value, I'm sorry, the dollar, remember, I'm a taxpayer too, my family lives in Phoenix too, they're home right now without me, too, and so I'm relying on folks like you to protect them even as we speak, so, that to me is much more valuable than, say, lighting the Melrose Arch, or the five-hundred thousand dollars for the Siegel Study, or- I've been on this council for two and a half years, and I came over from the state, and some people would send me to heck in a handbasket just for that, but I have to say, I worked a lot with your union, folks, I think you're aware of that, well, not you personally, I don't believe, but I worked with a lot because I was sort of the law-and-order guy, ran a lot of bills about police, I just think the core functions for both the state, there are others, but for the state and for the city is fire and police, it's much more expensive, frankly, just as a practical matter, as a councilperson, to replace one of you than other employees, who aren't, they don't need a special training site, they don't need weaponry, they don't frankly need the educational attainment, in many cases that you do, et cetera, I got really ripped for talking about this a few weeks ago, but it doesn't make it any less true, and so I think we are wrong-headed to treat everybody the same in this, no matter how nice a sentiment that may be, we talk a lot about family here, although you notice, I don't, this isn't really a family, it is a business concern in many ways, that's trying to provide services to one and a half, or one-point-six million people, we got a lot of customers, and if you guys don't do your jobs, people die, and that's not true in every job that we have at the city, so I'm a little frustrated with how we've approached this, Will, you said something, you made another excellent presentation tonight, but you said something last week that I thought was absolutely true, we spend a lot of time blaming staff, David Cavassos, or whatever, when it gives you revenue projections of, say, seven-and-a-half percent growth for the next year, and nobody else is predicting that anywhere else, why accept that number, it's not sacrosanct, question it, or say, let's just be more conservative, we don't have to accept anything the staff says, my first six months here drove me crazy, 'cause people would come to my office and tell me how I had to vote, I could vote however I'd like, as you suggested, there can be political repercussions for that, and I understand that, I've been doing this for a while, but it drove me crazy that it seemed like I was obligated to vote a certain way, just because staffers told me to, after about six months, they got used to me, and that did change, but it was a fascinating change from the state, where we asked staffers to go do the work, and then they went and did it, the ideas came from the legislature and not the other way around, in this particular case, we're under no obligation to treat everybody the same, period, that I've heard, there may be libel ramifications, we're under no obligation, you said it last week, but I just wanna confirm that, the city manager, we had that conversation before, we can treat different groups differently, is that, I mean, that's a fair statement, correct, Ed?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Waring, yes.
We can, we can make whatever contract really we want, effectively, as the mayor said, we talked about this earlier today, that could have repercussions, maybe we skip the city manager's step in this process in the future if that happens, we are not obligated to vote for- They're not obligated to vote for anything, we can use and exercise independent judgment, I know, you know, unions have issues with Councilman DeCecio, and I'm sure myself, so I'm not looking for, I mean, you talked about political somethings, I forget what it is that you, the word, exact term that you used, I understand that, I understand suspicion, I'm a suspicious guy myself, so I understand that completely, and if you want a friend in this business, go get a dog, 'cause it's just not that kind of thing, I'm stealing that joke from McCain, who undoubtedly is stealing it from someone else, so, your reward is in heaven, that's another one he came up with, so I'm not expecting any niceties at all, but I have been talking about a lot of the things, that Councilman DeCecio and I, and Councilman Gates are talking about cutting, and he's done, Councilman Gates has done an outstanding job on the infrastructure and cutting down our overhead and everything, I think eighty-nine million dollars at last count, that's money that goes back, hopefully, into your pockets, at least that's the way it should work, but I can tell you that we have been talking about a lot of these issues for a long time, we're not Johnny Come-Latelys to this, and a lot of my frustration, and if I haven't articulated it clearly enough, I am sorry, because I wanted to, this goes back to my time at the state, we shouldn't be spending money on frivolous stuff, or studies that don't go anywhere, or garbage studies and so forth, we should be spending it on this, that would make me feel better, it'd make my wife, whose father was a police officer for twenty-plus years in Tempe, feel better, and I'd feel better about where my kids are right now, and that, that just, I'm a taxpayer, so, a big part of the reason I got into this was how we spend our money, and we're not spending it wisely, I think, when we talk about some of the stuff that we've highlighted, that we're still spending money on, and we're not cutting it as much as we're cutting this, that just doesn't make any sense to me, so, we can do, we don't have to go with this tonight, I think a continuance was offered by Councilman DeCecio before, it was voted down, but I believe it could come back, so, it might be something we want to think about, we've got, what, six more days, or five more working days, but, in any case, I just wanna say that, and it's been something that's sort of been bothering me for two and a half years, I'm glad I got it off my chest, thank you.
Alright, so we'll have, we'll have time later for comments, the real issue is, are there questions on the presentations made by our staff, or by Phoenix Law and Order Association, if not, I'm gonna go to the numerous cards-
Can I make a comment reference, Councilman Waring's talk of the continuance, just on that one brief topic, Mayor? Where I'm at on the continuance, Councilman Waring, if the continuance is for, for you guys to direct the city manager and us to find a solution, we're all in favor of that, if it's just to delay the process, to shove cuts down our throats, we would not be in favor of that, so.
And I don't think, you hadn't asked me to talk to the city manager, I mean, we ran into each other in the hall, but I don't remember, if you want me to ask, I certainly will in that period, if, if nothing's gonna change, I agree with you, might as well just get it over, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, so now we're gonna go to the cards that we have here, the first speaker will be Sean Mattson, and President Mattson, you have a few cards donated to you, so you have up to eight minutes, and then followed by Ken Crane.
Wow, first, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, the gentleman that spoke earlier, first of all, I've never written a Twilight ticket, so, but nevertheless, I guess I'm one of those fascist pirates, or whatever he said, communist pirates, whatever he said, so, ahoy, reference the continuation, I guess I have mixed opinions on that, and so let me get that over with first, I think that the continuation should have happened a long time ago, all these, all these stats that apparently council's been asking for, should have been provided a long time ago, I think, I think we're in the eleventh hour right now. City employees, specifically the members that I represent, the sergeants and lieutenants of the Phoenix Police Department, we've been doing more with less, and we've heard that, heard that time and time again, but I'm gonna add to that saying, we've been doing more with less for less, and I think it comes a time where that's gotta stop. The Siegel Study, which was, been talked about previous to me, it adjusted several pays throughout, but we've been continuing to do more with less for less, as middle managers and executives were adjusted on the upswing, we've been adjusted on the downswing. Five labor units took their negotiations to an independent arbitrator, independent being the key word there, plea was one of those units, plea was the only unit that was victorious with the independent arbitrator, that independent arbitrator not only said, hey, with relief to the city, continue as is right now, but let's respect them, and respect the work that they do, and give them a raise next year, I ask the city council to respect that process, and respect the independent arbitrator's decision, I'm not asking them to do what plea came to the table and asked for, I'm not asking them to do what the city came to the table and asked for, I'm asking them to respect the process and do what the independent arbitrator requested. As, I've heard Councilman Noakowski say, we are Team Phoenix, we are, there's a solution, and I heard in the several budgetary hearings from the citizens that proposed several solutions, I hear from the labor groups that have spoken at this and council meetings before here, what some of the solutions are, I'd like to hear more solutions coming from the city, and maybe even the city council as well. There's a difficult decision to make, some of the things that I've heard requested of city staff are, well, let's go ahead and just cut everybody's pay, again, let's continue with current concessions, let's continue with the same levels of service, let's, let's not seek opportunities for external revenue, let's begin to hire again, if we do all those things, we will be the next Detroit, this place will go bankrupt, all those things, though, are politically easy to say, because that's what many politicians believe their constituency wants, the problem is, is in the twenty budget hearings, I didn't hear that, I heard people say, go ahead, we want the same levels of service, go ahead, keep the cops, go ahead, start hiring again, we're willing to pay for it. I ask you, are you gonna listen to those citizens? I ask you, respect the arbitrator's opinion, we're tired of doing more with less for less, we never asked to get paid for or compensated for more than what we're worth, but we also didn't get asked to get paid for less than what we're worth, thank you.
Thank you, President Mattson, next speaker will be Ken Crane, you have a couple people donated, it looks like three people, so up to eight minutes, but-
Thank you, Mayor.
And then Keith Yingling will be after that, good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, as a part of Please Contract Negotiations Team, it's been a long, arduous week, there's been a lot of behind-the-scenes maneuvering and conversations as we've attempted to reach a solution or consensus, obviously, as you can see by the filled room here tonight, that has failed. We find ourselves here right now because we remain at impasse with regard to our contracts, specifically pay and benefits, the emotions among our members are running the gamut, fear, anger, worry, frustration, but most of all, I think disappointment, disappointment in the council that can't seem to come up with the intestinal fortitude to do the right thing. Last week, you heard from a parade of officers, family members, and citizen supporters, you heard firsthand accounts about the hazards of the job, the name of all thirty-eight officers Phoenix has lost in line of duty was read into the record, it was done for a reason. The message is clear, the hazards we face on a daily basis are real, and the loss of thirty-eight fellow officers is a very real and painful reminder of that. I, along with my fellow officers in the room, have many things in common, however, one topic I'm pretty sure that I think we can all agree on for certain, is that we hate politics, and we hate political games. Cops as a general rule tend to be black and white, we work in a rules-oriented environment, something's either right or wrong, you're either telling the truth, or you're lying. In our world, there's very little gray area, and I think what we struggle with is that in the political world, there's a lot of gray area. Our officers exist in a world where we have to play by the rules, and they naturally expect others to do so as well. In a perfect world, we as police officers wouldn't need to be involved in politics other than to cast votes in an election, we find ourselves in a default position of having to be involved in politics to fend off the continual attacks from those who would take from us by cutting and/or diminishing pay and benefits, we have to employ paid lobbyists to carry our water on issues of political importance to us, to watchdog those in the legislative world that would try to pass laws to take away hard-earned and won benefits. Phoenix has always been a world-class city with a world-class police force, I believe that I, along with every officer in here, is proud to be a Phoenix police officer. To maintain an elite status such as this, among major cities, in major cities, public safety is a one thing you cannot compromise on. We all know that businesses are the economic engine that drive any big city, big businesses bring in the jobs and expand the tax base, if you're the CEO of a Fortune 500 company looking to relocate your business to a new city right now, would you go with Phoenix or Detroit? Okay, it's a no-brainer, and it's a large part of that decision that, for any corporation, hinges on quality of life and crime rates, both of these are directly impacted and driven by the quality of the police force a city has to offer. Let's take a minute and look at the state of public safety in Phoenix. No hiring in the past five years, with none in the foreseeable future, over five-hundred positions down, continued attrition due to retirements every month, response times increasing on emergency calls for service, officers that continually have to go on dangerous calls without backup, look no further than the headlines to see that violence against officers is steadily increasing, patrol squads are often forced to run dangerously short, sometimes with three or four bodies in areas that should have seven or eight, unlike fire, we don't get guaranteed overtime to fill positions when officers are off, detective details that are short-staffed and are buried under huge caseloads, and officers sometimes being forced to delay or be denied the ability to take leave when they would like to because of short-staffing. All these issues contribute to the steadily decreasing morale of an already beleaguered police force, our officers are some of the finest in the world bar none, and I think all of us here care deeply about the current state of affairs we find ourselves in, or we wouldn't even be here tonight. The Phoenix PD, on a state and national level, has been looked upon by many as the gold standard of policing, just like the city, the way the city fights to maintain its high bond rating, how long can the Phoenix PD be looked upon as the gold standard when our pay and benefits are slowly whittled away, making it no better than any other competing agency out there? How do we continue to attract the best qualified candidates, when we're just like everybody else? When our hiring's at a standstill, we've been gutted to the point of over five-hundred positions short. On the other hand, we justify and approve exorbitant salary increases and pay packages for city managers, some of you justify this by saying it's not, it's what's needed to stay competitive and attract top talent, some of the things we heard, one councilman's justified his decision to vote for former city manager David Cavassos' pay hike by comparing him to a first-round draft pick, that worked pretty well, we paid, and Santa Ana picked him up in the first round. Quite frankly, it rings hollow, and it's insulting to everyone in the room to listen to a city manager who just got a fifty-six thousand dollar a year pay bump, raising his total pay to three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars a year, talk about the need for shared sacrifice. I'll tell you what, give all of us in this room fifty-six thousand dollars a year in a pay increase, and we'll be happy to share in the sacrifice with a ten percent pay cut. All these men and women here in the room tonight would rather be anywhere than at a city council meeting trying to convince a group of politicians to make a decision that to these officers is painfully obvious. We know why we're here, and we know what happened, the city knew all along, they were planning on balancing the budget on the backs of city employees with a two-and-a-half percent pay cut, they proposed three-and-a-half, or three-point-two with a built-in cushion, knowing two-point-five was the magic number, fire rushed out and settled for the two-point-five, this positioned them to be the heroes, hey, the city wanted three-point-two, we beat them back to two-point-five, and all of you expected every other labor group to jump in the fire conga line. The one thing you didn't expect or prepare for is that any of the units going to arbitration would get a positive fact-finder's ruling, you put all your eggs in one basket with no Plan B, fire wound up with egg on their face, were settling early, and you now find yourselves where you've been painted into a corner. Our officers have to play by the rules, we are held to the confines of state statute, we're held accountable to AZ Post standards, we are held accountable to city administrative regulations and policy manuals, we are held to all the rules outlined in our department policy manual, which when you print it out, is over a thousand pages. The hazards of navigating this minefield of laws and rules on a daily basis can create immense stress, knowing that the slightest infraction can result in investigations, discipline, and sometimes career loss, we're used to dealing with criminals that don't operate by the rules, we expect it from them. As police officers, all we have to bank on is our reputation and our personal integrity, we're taught to operate from a perspective of truth, honor, and integrity, if we fail to do so, there's a heavy price to pay, so the question is, are you gonna honor the process, are you gonna be just like the criminal element we have to deal with on the streets every day, that has no moral compass, and is of the belief the rules don't apply to them? If you're of the belief that performance parameters and rules can be adjusted on a whim to suit your needs, then you're sending a clear message here, citywide, the message is this, contract negotiations are a sham, fact-finding is a sham, arbitration is a sham, and we've, all we've been doing for months is engaging in political theater. You guys, the council, you're at a moral and ethical crossroads this evening, sometimes doing the right thing is the hardest, and we are all here this evening to ask each of you to do the right thing, honor the very process that we were told to honor ourselves two years ago, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Crane, Keith Yingling is next, followed by Reverend Jarrett Moppen.
Sorry, I just need about three minutes, I should have one extra card.
You got it, that's fine.
Thank you, my computer just died.
Oh. Do you want someone else to go first, then we can give you a second, if you're okay?
I took pictures of it. Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor, my name's Keith Yingling, I've been a Phoenix police officer for approximately seventeen years, Ms. Pastor, I live in your district, Mr. Mayor, our kids play in the same sports league, where I'm a coach for my son's baseball team. I work about sixty hours a week for a choice my wife and I made to have our kids at a private school, we don't live beyond our means in terms of toys or expensive cars, my family of four lives in a small thirteen-hundred-square-foot house in central Phoenix to be closer to school, practice, and games, forty of my weekly hours are spent as a narcotics detective, I work in a unit where seven full squads once covered a city well-known for a distribution center for most of the nation's illegal drugs, we now operate with three squads investigating street-level drug crimes for the entire city. Because of budget cuts, we became accustomed to doing more with less, but over the years, our unit has been decimated to the point where we try to do something with nothing. My additional twenty hours is spent doing security in uniform at several private businesses for what is known as off-duty work, to achieve the goals of my family, I find these additional employment opportunities to compensate- to compensate for the lost wages and concessions and cost of living increases. For example, since the beginning of our concessions in 2010 alone, the gas prices increased by a dollar a gallon, yet our base pay continues to be reduced every year for the last four years. Let's talk about the past a little bit. In 2010, management threatened both police and citizens of Phoenix with a layoff of 300 officers, claiming the city finances were in crisis. We stepped up and agreed to concessions in an effort to retain those positions for everyone's benefit. Within a few months of the agreement came the first gut punch. The city of Phoenix buys a theme park for $3.2 million, not including costs of renovations with money they claim had been set aside for the purchase previously. The second gut punch for me came soon afterwards, when Deb Ostriker, the Public Information Officer for Sky Harbor publicly stated that regardless of the financial state of the city, the extension of the light rail into the airport would continue without question at a cost of $644 million for the first stage alone. Not long before the so-called 2010 budget crisis, the city's elite decided, what's a city without a train? Little doubt remains that back-room handshakes and special contributions were made before we were given the estimate of $1.4 billion to construct just the first 20 miles. That's $70 million per mile. What's worse is that the ridership only pays for $44 million of the five-year, $184 million operating costs, leaving us $140 million in debt just to keep the switch on for five years. It is a proven fact that no mass transit system in any major city has ever been financially successful, but our elected leaders tell us the operation cost is balanced with the help of local taxes and subsidies. Also, Phoenix can say we have a light rail system. Having trouble. Here are a few more absolute failures pursued and approved by the city council, just for a few. The renovation of Margaret T. Hans Park, how many millions of dollars were we pouring into that? We can't forget the massive USF sculpture at ASU Downtown Center, the Melrose Gateway Arch, the purchase of 1,000 small buses used for a year and no longer even in service. How about the purchase of light rail in general, not to mention the extension? Let's fast forward to the future briefly. When all the officers in this room choose to retire, I'd like a quiet show of hands from all of us who, as a result of their employment with the Phoenix Police Department, will not receive any benefits from Social Security when they retire. Every one of us is raising our hands right now. In recent years, certain members of the council have gone to great lengths to villainize and even criminalize the same Phoenix police officers in this room. What surprised me the most is that the people listening to the political rhetoric don't know that career Phoenix police officers are not even eligible for any kind of Social Security benefit. All of your city employees work hard, whether it's keeping grounds or directing traffic during the summer months. The distinction for me is in the structure, not the amount of pay or the type of work done. Decades ago, the city factored an additional amount of a police officer's salary toward their own pension to offset not paying towards FICA and Social Security. Now, your proposal is to change the way we structure our pensions, which are inherently different than any other city employee. All city employees, other than police and fire, are eligible to receive Social Security benefits amounting to approximately $12,000 per year. No officer in this room will receive this benefit as a result of their employment with the city of Phoenix. Contrary to some council members' theories, I can promise you that I will not retire with the million dollars in any of my bank accounts. Ms. Williams, I read your comments in this morning's article, and I'm nothing less than shocked. As the wife of a retired Phoenix police officer, you earn at least a portion of your income with the same benefits you are now threatening to take away from every single officer on this department. I find it hypocritical that if not for your elected seat in front of us, you would no doubt be standing with us. How will you vote in just a few short years when the same city manager proposes to cut the pay and benefits of retirees? I'd like for the city manager to define sacrifice. Mr. Manager, you were recently given a sacrificial pay increase of $58,000 per year. At a 1.6% pay cut from your $58,000, which you so generously offer as a team player, you'll be giving back $928 annually. Mr. Manager, that's 77 whole dollars a month. That isn't sacrifice. It's another punch in the gut, not only to your police officers, but every single city employee who has taken a pay cut in the last four years. This is Cavassos all over again, and the city council approves. In closing, I'll ask this: Every day we work, we wear a bulletproof vest to protect us against those who would rather see us dead. Tell me, what do we have to do to protect ourselves from those elected assassins? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yingling. Reverend Jarrett Moppen is next, and you have a few individuals donating time to you. How much time you need?
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. So much time as I may consume, is that a safe answer? You all have made me miss Bible studies, I feel like preaching now. It's not a trade, it's a calling. What they do, what our police officers do, it's not a trade, it's a calling. And there's a difference between the two of them. And I understand the frustrations of all of our labor groups, but especially the people that are here on behalf of our officers, the plea folk that are here tonight. It's not a trade, it's a calling. Recently, just in the last week, we had a visitor from out of town here, a person that weighed in on this situation, that helped me to have a better understanding of it. No one on the council, unfortunately, was at the particular meeting that we held, but I talked to several of you about it, and that is when we had as my guest and a guest of Dr. Warren Stewart, Reverend Jesse Jackson in town. And while he spent several hours here with us, we talked at great length about the labor problems that the city's having. And I emailed something to the leadership at plea and shared something with some of you, and that is a lesson we can learn from history. When I see how the council and how the city manager keeps pushing and pushing and pushing and pushing our law enforcement without giving them the resources that they need, the compensation that they're due for this calling, this service that they're called to do, I'm reminded, frankly, of the firefighter strike in Chicago in 1980. We are really blessed that these men and women that are out here tonight haven't walked out of their job, because if they did, what would you do? You gonna call the cops on the cops? I don't think so. It would paralyze this entire city. So I am thankful and amazed that it hasn't reached that point yet. It's unprecedented in our town. It's unprecedented in most towns, because I think most towns appreciate the job that they're doing. So to my brothers and sisters at plea, you know, it's okay sometimes to exercise a little black power. And I don't mean black as in the color of your skin, I mean black as in the color of your uniform. You have a lot of power in that black uniform. And to see it exploited and to see it misused is really frustrating for me. Again, I'm going to make this a moral question for you tonight. I've seen all of you, those of you that were already on the council, those of you that were aspiring politicians to join the council, many of the folks here have seen you, as I have, adhere to the power of that black uniform. We've all witnessed you attend the funeral of police officers that are slain in the line of duty, and you all get up there and above the dead body of their brothers, and in the sight of God, frankly, you promise and pledge to give them everything that they need to get their job done. Does it take a dead police officer to get you to do the right thing? The only difference between tonight and those other days is we were at a public memorial service. Well, here you have them, living, breathing in the flesh, alive, at their most valuable existence, form of existence for the city, and you won't do right by them tonight. So I've talked about black power, I might as well talk about the next thing. And that's the crimson tide that's coming your way, and I hope when the crimson tide comes, I hope that it rolls tide roll. And that is every city of Phoenix employee that you have, you're gonna push them to the breaking point. You rank and file, you're gonna push fire to the breaking point eventually, as soon as someone discovers the ambulance overtime scam. You're gonna push them to the brink, and I don't know if we're ready for it, but what do you say to working people? What do you say to the people that engage in the high calling of police work? What do you say to them? You know? It's really a sad state of affairs. There's enough money, I believe, again, if these agreements or these MOUs were put on hold, I think the city could discover the funds that are necessary to meet the needs of both plea and all of the other unions that have been here before you. But that's a cut that hurts you. Travel, that's a cut that hurts you. Somebody told me we can't cut travel because travel somehow helps, and the lobbyist funds somehow help bring in federal law enforcement people that help with community relations with the Latino community. You know, we can do that in-house. We talk about lobbying. You pay people to go several blocks to the west. Why don't you get off of your asses and go several blocks to the west? We don't need all of the millions of dollars that go into the lobbying budget. Sure, I understand how politics is played, you keep your guy in Washington. Even though most deals that we make with our delegation and with Congress start here at home, we're not stupid, but you still need your guy in Washington. And then you keep somebody else around at the city, but cut the other people loose, cut them loose. Cut the travel in half, cut it down to 25%. Cut the fees for associations and leagues and conventions that you're a part of, cut all of that, because none of that helps this city. Dig deep, go into your own pocket. That's what some of our cops do in their off-time, when they're coaching teams, they don't bill the city for that. That comes out of their pay. When they do community service and volunteer work, they don't bill the city for that. That comes out of their own private time and their own private resources, because they are invested and they feel obligated to render a service to this city. You know, I already know that you're not going to do right by plea. And that's the irony of being at this podium, based on the way the votes look like they're lining up. I already know that. So my only words to the council and to the administration are be prepared. And my words to the members of plea that are here and that are within the sound of my voice, I say this very sincerely to you. As Dr. King said to sanitation workers in Memphis, as Reverend Jackson reminded me, he said to firefighters in Chicago, it's not the safest thing to do, it's not the happiest thing to do, but sometimes you gotta walk out. Sometimes you have to walk out. If you can't get the pay that you need and the respect that you need and the friendships are not coming through, sometimes you have to walk out. And let me tell you something, you want a better contract? Walk out. You want better benefits? Walk out. You want pay increase? Walk out. Want to work on release time? Walk out. What are they gonna do? What are they gonna do? Right now, there's an imbalance in power. You have the council on the one hand, making the final decision, you have the public and employees on the other. Something has to restore some balance, something has to shift so that there's a balance in terms of this power struggle that's going on. And you know, at least five members of the council know what I'm talking about. It's not Martian, it's Alinsky. There's an imbalance of power, and so you have to balance that power somehow. So if you're not satisfied, do what you have to do to get satisfaction for that high calling that you engage in. Other than that, I encourage the city to revamp their negotiation techniques, search for the money, even if you don't agree to do it tonight with the labor groups. If you want to amongst yourselves, you can analyze the various departments and try to figure out where there is still fat and where, Councilwoman, we haven't cut to the bone yet. There's a lot of places where you haven't cut to the bone, like your municipal marketing and a bunch of other places. You know, there's a lot of things you can do. I emailed a list to the mayor, maybe I'll email it to the rest of you. You can sell, there's opportunities for advertisement, you could auction liquor licenses, you could do any number of things to create new revenue to the city, on top of property taxes and on top of the reincarnation of the food tax. It's coming, it's coming. These things are coming. But what's not going away, and what's also coming, are these police officers who want to be justly compensated for the work that they're doing. And I just must say, I'd be remiss if I didn't say it, you shouldn't lie in God's house. So God forbid if we lose another officer, I'll make it a point to be at the next memorial service, and Mr. Clora I'm sure will provide me with that information. If I hear any of you make the same statements that you've made before to these officers when one of their brothers has fallen in the line of duty, I'll be sure to mount that pulpit and set the record straight. It's a very terrible thing to do. And that's not to say from time to time, I don't disagree with some of what plea stands for, but you've been to the well, Councilwoman Gallego, you've been to the well, your husband's been to the well, everybody up here's been to the well. That's the well. Don't abuse the well. Don't poison your well. Remember who they are and honor them, because it's not a trade, it's a calling. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend Moppen. The next speaker is Franklin Marino, and then he has two cards on that one, and then followed by Paul Barnes.
I guess I'll have to talk fast. Mayor Stanton, members of the city council, Mr. Zirker. My name is Franklin Marino, and I've been a resident of the city of Phoenix for a little over 21 years. I reside in District 2, and one of the reasons I moved out here is because I vacationed out here, and after spending 10 days, I decided I was gonna move to the Valley, because at the time, Phoenix was what I would consider a world-class city. Oddly enough, shortly after I moved out here, I would see signs when you entered the city from either Scottsdale or Paradise Valley. City of Phoenix, best-run city in the world. Well, in my opinion and a lot of opinion of my colleagues, friends, and neighbors, I think that's gone the way of the dodo bird. I've been a homeowner since 2000, and I pay taxes and I vote. Most of the shopping that my wife and I do is all in Phoenix, because we need to shop Phoenix, because we need to keep the tax dollars in Phoenix, keep them going in the general fund to keep the city running. I live right on the Scottsdale border, but I have specifically foregone going over to Scottsdale to keep the city running. That may have to change. I'm not a fan of taxes, just as much as the next person, but as far as the food tax, I think when you look at people that pay $4.50 for a drink at Starbucks twice a day, five days a week, I don't think... days a week, I don't think there's a big issue in paying a couple extra dollars in your grocery bill. It's not a big deal if it's gonna help the city out and it's gonna keep the city running, especially when at, at least the public budget meetings that I attended, the majority of the citizens, the people that live in this city, like me, the people that pay taxes, the people that depend on the police officers and the firefighters and the rest of the city employees to keep this city running, they all were overwhelmingly supportive of the food tax. So that might be something to bring up on another council agenda, is maybe let's resurrect it, let's bring it back if it's temporary, let's do what we have to do to keep things Ironically enough, I find myself in the same place where I was a week ago, as I was down here speaking on the same thing. Déjà vu all over again. And as I mentioned last week, from what I see, the city is fiscally irresponsible, and the financial ineptitude that's displayed, it just amazes me. We're supposed to be the sixth-largest city in the country, again, a world-class city, but yet every year we run into this problem with the budget. We run into this problem with expenses. We bring in all these expenses, but yet we don't have money. But yet I see the city waste money, and I'm not talking about the Melrose Arch, I'm talking about how they dig up the street and repave it three or four times, things like that. Stuff like that needs to change. We need to better spend our money. Remember, I said I voted. In 2007, I voted for Proposition One, because it was gonna hire 400 police officers and 100 firefighters to help out two departments that were already starting to see the burdens of a city that had this insatiable growth where we had to go annex to the north, annex to the south, annex to the southwest. We took on all this additional land, we took on all this additional responsibility, building houses and businesses, and yet how are the police department, the fire department, and the rest of the city departments supposed to service that? It's kinda tough. And then what, of course, happened? The economy tanked. In 2010, we were talking about laying off up to 350 of the police officers that we just spent all that money to recruit, train, and hire. Might I add, I am a city employee. I'm proud to be a Phoenix police officer with over nineteen and a half years on the job. I'm also the secretary of the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, and I represent these hard-working men and women who are here tonight, time away from their families, just like me, to present our case to you. As has been said before, we continue to do more with less. Squads are shorthanded on the street. Detectives are buried under unmanageable caseloads, and it gets worse and worse every day. We're getting to the point now where calls are starting to stack up again. We're going back to 1995, where units coming out of the station at shift change are finding calls that have been holding from the previous shift. We can't go on like this. It's not good for the officers, it's not good for the city. We talked about the fifteen police officers that we're hiring. I went to tech, and in tech math, the reality of hiring those fifteen officers is this: All we're gonna do is we're gonna pull fifteen officers out of patrol to fill school resource officer positions under the school safety program. We recognize we do need school resource officers, but we're not gaining anybody in patrol. Basically, patrol is gonna lose another fifteen bodies, and that's gonna only get worse with attrition as it continues. None of us became cops to become rich. And as Reverend said, it's not a job. For a lot of us, it's a profession. It's a calling. It's an avocation. It's something we do because we want to protect and serve, we want to give back to our community. Now, I didn't become a cop to get rich. If I wanted to get rich, I would've stayed working as a machinist, and I probably would've owned my own machine shop by now, and I would've been a small business owner. I became a cop because I wanted to give back to my community, and that's why everybody here who puts on a badge and a gun and a vest every day, that's why we're here. Do some people retire with a little bit more money than others? Yes, they do. But as far as the average rank-and-file street cop out there, or the average detective, they're not retiring with these six-figure pensions that we keep hearing about. It doesn't work that way. All we're asking is that we're paid a fair wage and given fair benefits for what we do every day. Yes, our job is different, but also, not to take away from the rest of the city employees, it takes all of us to keep the city running. We can't do the job without dispatchers. We can't do the job without the mechanics that serve our vehicle, that service our vehicles. It's a team effort. Everybody is in it together. One last thing. A gentleman earlier made the comment about the $65,000 Tahoe's. Well, I can tell you this: Since we transitioned to the Chevy Tahoe as a patrol vehicle, our fleet costs and our operating costs have gone down, because at 32 cents a mile, it's actually the most cost-effective vehicle for vehicle's life cycle to run in the fleet, where most of our vehicles are going out of service at 125,000 miles. We've pushed the Tahoe out to 170,000, and at the rate we're going, we're probably gonna get 200,000 miles out of them. So you, sometimes you have to spend a little bit more on the front end, but it's gonna pay you back in the long run, just like with the police officers. Do the right thing. Respect the process.